Just one second, we have a little bit of.
Technical difficulties. That's okay. We'll give you a chance to get a little more organized. We are on. Okay. It is 5:30 and I would like to call this meeting to order of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Mr. Powers, if you would call the roll.
Yep. Mr. Schwank?
Here.
Ms. McCoy? Mr. Price?
Here.
Mr. McCullough?
Mayor Carney?
Here. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from March 19th, 2025?
I can make a motion to approve the minutes from March 19th, 2025?
In a second.
Mayor Carney?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Schwank?
Yes.
Okay. Moving into our communication, Planning and Zoning update, Mr. Hutchison, if you would like to provide that?
Yeah, I don't have much for today. I just wanted to update the Commission on Mid-Ohio met yesterday. They had their board meeting yesterday. And it does seem like they have a little more definitive date for Seward Line now. It had kind of fluctuated between 27 and 28 for the past, over the past year. But it looks like they are anticipating on breaking ground on the plant and on the Forest Main on 42 by October this year, which will put us, hopefully if everything stays on track, possibly the end of 27. So it's a little bit ahead of the schedule than what we have been given the last six months or so. So hopefully that goes through. They're also right now exploring, doing some water testing because we're not out of water yet, but we'll soon be out of water to capacity here. So the ultimate plan is to build a new water plant here in Plain City somewhere. So they may have some temporary stopgaps in between. They might do an expansion to the current plant, possibly add a tower just to give us some reserve until that new plant is approved and built. So that's all I got.
All right, thank you. And do you have any update from BZI?
Yeah, so we met last week on April 9th. We had an appeal and a variance application. Those decisions will be made at the next BZI meeting on May 14th. And we do also have two applications on that agenda that evening, one conditional use and another variance.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. Council met last Monday and we had public hearings on our mobile vendor and also the Chapter 1139, Part 11 of the Planning and Zoning Code, and also the final annexation of the Commerce Park, and heard some concerns and items that the developer will be addressing. Other than that, we had several first readings and talked about condensing our meetings from having work sessions in the summertime because we are kind of slowing down on legislation. But then also we will be getting more, we don't need the work sessions as much because we can extend our actual council meetings because we'll be prioritizing the budget come this summer. Also talked about an Uptown Alley archway program. We had a business owner to approach us about adding an archway in his alley and then also our public pedestrian alley. So the village is working on a consistent design for the alleys and for future ones that might go around the village as well. The Ohio State University students presented with the Union County Health Department a Trails Master Plan. And so a lot of the things that they presented are items that we are already requiring developers to take into consideration with multi-use paths and connectivity between neighborhoods. And so that was great to know that we are already doing everything that basically they suggested. Other than that, I've had a busy couple of weeks. And also wanted to thank our Plain City Police Department for conducting a thorough investigation on the case of Madison Baby Doe. As you might have seen, that case was given some closure. And just appreciate our police department for everything that they have done. I attended the Madison County Chamber Board meeting a couple of weeks ago and it was at Tolls. So if you do not know everything that Tolls provides to the community, as long as with their students, I would highly suggest checking out their automotive repair program that you, if you need an oil change or if you want your car detailed, the Tolls students will actually, by being supervised by their advisor, can provide that for you. And then we are also in America 250 semi-quintcentennial town. So we are meeting internally about a standalone event that we can plan in 2026. So it's been a busy couple of weeks and just want to invite everyone to attend National Day of Prayer on Thursday, May 1st. That is taking place at Pastime Park. Pastor Alice Phillips of the Plain City Presbyterian Church has always taken on that event and several in the community of us are stepping up to make sure that it continues. So with that, I will pass, move into any public comment. Is anyone here besides talking about the concepts? Okay. Moving into new business, we have CP-25-1, concept plan for 8940, State Route 161, Madison County Parcel number 02-00076, Union County Parcel number 15-0021024. Applicant Kiran Bassarredi with Dublin by Concord Limited. So I will hand it over for the concept.
Sure. Well, good evening. I'm Todd Ferris. I may not need this, but that's okay. I'm Todd Ferris, Ferris Building and Design. We're a land planning firm, Headier Ohio. And Kiran has hired us to help him start looking at this property. He's owned this for probably three years? Probably three years. So he's owned this property. And I think he's actually brought a concept review through once before, several years ago. And since then, learned a little bit more about this parcel, things that need to happen out here on the corridor with, you know, just some brief investigation with ODOT, things with the floodplain and the floodway that we can and can't do. So that's really reshaped a lot of the initial thought process from the other firm that had originally looked at this. So this is pretty high level still, so obviously we won't be getting into lots of detail. But what we're looking at here is more of a mixed-use development with three major components, a commercial component, a multifamily component, and then a single-family component. Some of the big moves that need to happen with this piece of property that helped make this viable and I think exciting is we're looking at relocating Warner Road through the site. Obviously, that gets rid of a horrible 90-degree dogleg turn in Warner Road. We've presented that preliminarily to ODOT. Didn't get a no, didn't get a yes, but they're going to be looking at this whole corridor holistically. And I think we could get that to fit in with their plans and definitely clean up a horrible intersection that's there today. But one thing that that really does is it starts to activate this site. And it actually turns it more from just being a frontage site to something that I think people get drawn into and open up the opportunities for what this site can become. Because if we literally only have a front door and it's just a simple little roadway, you're probably looking at just a great big subdivision. And I think 161 probably wants a little bit better than that. Just because it's, you know, your economic engine and I think that's important. So, you know, we saw that being helpful with some direction from staff as far as the commercials go. We've actually looked at one of these out parcels as potentially being a hotel. You know, we're not in any conversations with hotel people, but we know that there is some interest, that people do talk to staff on that. And it just, you know, it seems like it could make sense and it certainly is a good location for it. And we've also, you know, sized these things for either multi-tenant buildings or restaurants. I think restaurants would be great over this great big pond in the front. That would serve as our regional stormwater for the northern, basically, half of this site. So it'd be an incredibly large pond and it could be something that's really cool and help activate that, probably ultimately get pathways and stuff around there and really make that a focal feature and part of the entry. As far as the multifamily is concerned, we're looking at approximately, you know, with this scheme, 312 units. Would look at this as probably being a three-story type of product with a mixture of bedroom types in there, but predominantly one and two bedrooms. What we see in the market is that, you know, all of these are outfitted with a clubhouse that has their exercise facilities, their pools, their outdoor kitchens, dog parks, things of that. Because when you're paying $1,400 or $1,500 for one bedroom apartment, you need a little bit more than just a place to sit. So they want a lot more than that. So again, we could locate that so it activates again that central open space. But our access then is from relocated Warner Road instead of off of 161, which I know ODOT would greatly appreciate that. So we could funnel all of our stuff through there. And then lastly is the single-family. Right now, we've looked at this as a 52-by-120-foot lot product, which equates to a 40-foot white house, which is, you know, your typical two-car garage type of home. One thing that we like about this site is just the opportunities that we have to back the homes up to Sugar Creek? Sugar Run, Sugar Run Creek. Because number one, it's a large floodway and floodplain, but it's just beautiful views down there. And those are premium lots. If you see that most of these homes really have access to open space, which is real nice as well. We have included right now high-level walking paths to connect the two sides across the creek. I think one of the comments that we received from staff is this would be a great place for a regional walkway because something about the train station or something, or something down there. There's a lot of things that I'm not aware of, but that could become a great north-south connector for that pathway. So we could, you know, reserve easements or build pathways. You know, obviously it's something that would be great for our residents. One thing that I have noticed just looking at this, this is one of the probably only places that we're going to have the opportunity to cross this creek just because of the width of the floodplain here. We have fortunately or unfortunately have a very small portion where we've shown the roadway there that is actually spannable because you have to free span the floodway. It's a big cost, but it can be done, so it's not cost-proportive. So we can marry the two together. And then one other thing is the connection then of Pleasant Valley Road Extension on the other side of the road that will continue that going north and allow further connections to that. And if I remember right, Derek, didn't the city have some intention too of connecting the roadway? I don't have a label, but the one that would be going to the northeast?
Yeah, I mean, we have lots of conceptual what we would like to see. Obviously, we don't have control of any of that land yet, but we envisioned a road, almost kind of a bypass, you know, round. So yeah. And then that road, so that Pleasant Valley Boulevard there, that's going to, where they have it deadened, that's where Darby Station deadens there. So it will connect into Darby Station. And then that road going to the north parcel there, whenever it would develop, it would go into that one as well.
Yeah, so from the information that we've gathered so far, again, it's been, you know, not very technical. Well, no, I mean, not real technical meetings, but here are our connections. Here's our pedestrian walkways, things like that. To just start getting this incorporated into the plan and bring it forward to this group so we can start getting some info. Because, you know, our next step really is to annex and then to start the zoning process. And I think we're getting pretty close to that point here, just knowing what we know about the site, that what we have is feasible and can work. So, you know, again, high level, that's what we're presenting. And I'm sure high level will hear what your opinion is on that. So, okay? And I'm here to answer any other questions that I can, but that's kind of it for my presentation.
Thank you. My first question, looking here, I like how you have in the commercial portion upfront that you have a lot of the parking, you know, behind where it's not on, visible from the road. Can you, like on the one side, can you almost mirror it over here? Or is that more of the hotel?
Well, yeah, we can. Yeah, absolutely. We can look at where the buildings are pulled forward. Yes, yes. And those would be the details that we would get into. But no, absolutely. And that definitely makes sense for the ones that are on 161, for sure. Yeah.
And then moving north into the larger lots, you have larger lots there kind of next to your commercial. But we asked, we had Fisher Homes come in that will be to the south. And one of the concessions that we asked is like move your nicer lots maybe to the back, which I know you have larger lots back here, but it's just.
Well, right now, they're all the same size.
Yeah, okay.
Those are bigger.
Visually, it looks like they're big.
Well, they're on a cul-de-sac, so they're pie-shaped, but technically they're the same size. But so you're saying maybe larger lots towards the back and smaller up front?
Or even, I know they, some council members have said like mix, a mixture. So if you have like a ranch next to, so it doesn't look like it's all the same type of housing.
Right. And we've worked with different groups in the past where they want them mixed up. And then we've worked with other groups work. So, yeah, I think a lot of that's going to end up being, you know, when there's a home builder, that might be chosen that we have to work with them directly, but you know, those are good comments.
And with these, the way this is laid out too, I kind of envision, because it almost looks like three separate sections. So, you know, let's say they have a home builder that has three different collections, like the Fisher Home, maybe they could do a different collection in each area.
Yeah.
My kind of, I mean, I know these are big-scale, big ideas here, but we've been pretty successful about trying to keep landscape buffers between property lines, not of the individual lots, but of obviously of the perimeters of the projects. So it doesn't look like that's been taken into account quite yet. I mean, obviously, it's high level right now. But I would say work with the village to look at some of the landscape buffers that we've created in the past and try to replicate some of that.
Yeah. Existing tree rows that are along a lot of these, which we would ultimately try to save because you can't replicate those very easily. But yeah, it's a good comment.
And I mean, I'll say that creek, I mean, I see that 100-year floodplain, but that creek seems to hit that 100-year floodplain a lot. It really floods out there, so just make sure.
It's a one-year floodplain?
It seems like a one-year floodplain.
Well, it's the only thing that runs through here. I mean, really, it is. Yeah. It's gonna, it takes a lot of volume.
It sure does.
Well, and with the big Darby setbacks and all that stuff, we're pretty far away from even that 100-year. So.
I mean, I think it looks good, though. It's all put together and it makes sense. Relocated Warner Road makes a lot of sense, I think. Definitely integrate the bike paths and multi-use paths. I mean, we've spent a lot of time as a group trying to get that system up and running, right? And then develop so any connection you can make to the ones that we are trying to make.
And there was, if I remember, there was some debate that I was, it wasn't a debate, but it was, is there going to be a path on 161, is there not? Currently, I show up, but there was like, I don't know if that goes any farther or not. That's something that I think we ultimately have to investigate.
Right. So. Yeah, yeah. I would imagine that. So in keeping mind, folks, too, so you can see at the bottom there, the bottom left corner there, that's Fisher Homes where our Heritage Trail now is going to spit out right there into 161. So we're just a hop and skip away that could have a large, you know, ranch off that one that could take you through this. And then, you know, our Commerce Park is just a couple of parcels north of this, too. So we are very close to moving up toward Commerce on the south side. I know there's a lot of activity going on in these parcels up here. So it is very likely that this all will be developed. So this could lead all the way to.
Yeah. It would be great if you guys could coordinate with all those different developers to make this system, this trail system, you know, work together. It'd be great.
But they didn't, they weren't shy to ask us to work with them.
Good, yeah.
I mean, obviously, it's just like off, I sometimes say like to connect the Fisher Home entrance to, but there's no way.
Yeah, yeah, unfortunately, it's, they got that little bit of break right there and.
How close is it? I mean, because there's, I don't know where Andy will be able to tell us, but.
So we're annexed across the street. So if we cross the street in front of, I think that's the craft property there. I mean, so there could potentially just cross there and have a sidewalk that connects to that.
So there's enough distance, though, to have two entrances on one side of the street, one on the other?
It's part, well, for the Heritage Trail?
No, no, no.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Property entrance. Because that's going to be thought about, there's ODOT regulations for that.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I mean, that's, yeah, the safety setting or the traffic state is going to dictate that. ODOT will dictate where those could be. So no, yeah, there's going to be, I think there's going to be plenty of space. Now, you know, what we don't know yet, Fisher's working on theirs and then of course the Madison Gateway Projects, ODOT is working on what 161 is going to look like. Are we going to have roundabouts or are we going to have traffic lights? There's going to be something. I mean, just like Darby Station was the first to build out there and you see the roundabout they have there, which honestly probably should have been bigger. So we, you know, learn. So now we'll, ODOT will probably be looking a lot at those. I mean, roundabouts are, I mean, just to get to here from Dublin, we're going to be roundabouts you go through. They're coming, they're going to come.
Yep, yep.
Going to have to design our cars like they're race cars where the inside wheels are smaller.
We just need narrower cars. Turn these two lanes into four lanes.
I think I would be worried about the long stretches of road we've been talking about. That's why the constant thing of like trying to break them up so you can't just drag race down a neighborhood. So have any way you can have them slightly curved or have breaks and stuff like that is always helpful when you get into a long stretch, like you're going to have a couple of them.
Okay.
Just to make it a little safer and a little easier.
Yeah, that's a good comment.
Good comments.
Any comments from our fire department?
Don't smoke in bed? Don't smoke in bed?
Yes.
Okay. No fire.
So Brian, while you guys are here, as far as an access, does this look, I mean, so right now it would have the Darby Station and then the 161, does that mean?
Given the size, I mean, it would be one.
Okay.
Yeah, ODOT was pretty adamant that we would probably only get one curb cut.
Yeah.
No, I think you're on the right path. I think all of it looks right, that all fits. You're on the right, on the right path.
Okay.
Are you thinking the bridge is going to be pretty something monumental, kind of epic?
Well, it probably is just going to be a large, very large con span. So, but no, it's not going to be a.
Feature.
No. More than likely. I don't know, that's a good question. We haven't thought that much. All we know is we can span it and we've got a price to span it.
Yeah.
So.
We're thinking of planning like an attached pedestrian walk to with that bridge.
You're asking questions that I, you know, somebody had literally just done a project that was similar scale, like talked to the contractor, they got a number. And my guess is it certainly probably had pedestrian crossing on it. So we know the value within a couple hundred thousand dollars. At this point. Okay? Okay?
I think that everybody's questions are answered, okay?
Awesome. Well, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Now I'll open up the public hearing for ZZ-25-6. And half of our audience leaving, so I. Now I will.
I don't think about this.
Yes. I will close the public hearing for ZZ-25-6. ZZ-25-6, zoning code amendment, Chapter 11, 85.02, Corridor Development Overlay District of Part 11 of the Planning and Zoning Code.
So this is just some cleanup. So in this existing ordinance, they had sign regulations that was specifically for this overlay district. With our new sign code that we passed, the sign code covers these already in the sign code. So instead of having it in two different places, it just makes sense to do away with it in this section.
Will the sign code be different signage for different areas or is that spelled out?
Yeah, yeah, so yeah, so just similar to how this was the corridor district, they also states it out.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the new sign code is going to be a lot more descriptive in providing regulations for each zoning district. So B1, B2, B3, so.
Cool.
Okay. Yes, I will move to approve ZZ-25-6.
I'll second.
Whatever. Mayor Carney?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Schwank?
Yes.
ZZ-25-6 passes 3 to 0. I will now open the public hearing for ZZ-25-7.
Now's your chance, bud.
I will. I will now close the public hearing for ZZ-25-7. ZZ-25-7, zoning code amendment, Chapter 11, 36, amendments of Part 11 of the Planning and Zoning Code.
So this one here, this is the, so this is a section in our code that's been very frustrating for us. So when we set public hearings for planning and zoning, it's something that administration, when we set the agenda, we set, the public hearing is already set. The way our code is written, council has to set the public hearing during a council meeting. So we passed this today, let's say Monday there's a council meeting, they then have to set the council or at that meeting, they set the public hearing for 30 days out. So all of our codes, after they go through here, they actually don't get approved. By the time they go through council and then the 30-day tail of that, it's 60 days, sometimes 90 days, depending on what the schedule. This just rewards it that when the council administrator, when they set the agenda, they could set the public hearings for council without having to go through all that. So it's kind of speed up our process a little bit.
I'm all for helping to clean up any items that may drag us along. So I will move to approve ZZ-25-7.
I'll second.
Mr. Schwank?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mayor Carney?
Yes. ZZ-25-7 is approved 3 to 0, 3 to nothing. And we have discussion items for an update on Marin Reserve Sub Area B, Section 2 revision.
Yeah, so Arbor Homes, who's doing the single-family residential part of Marin Reserve, they are getting a large request for three-car garage, which is going to make lots wider. So what they are, what they're proposing, what they're going to do is widen several lots. But what that does, they're going to do away with lots. So physically, it's not changing, nothing's changing. Engineering is not changing, street lane is not changing. If anything, they're going to gain a little more extra green space, but they're going to lose two lots basically at the end of the street to be able to widen a handful of streets and parcels that are in there. So how our code reads for revisions, revisions are required to come back in front of this board. But something like this, that Maya, where nothing's really changing, just decrease in numbers, I just wanted to get the board's blessing that this is something that administration can handle without having them come back through and go through all this.
And they're still going to maintain the same house-to-house dimensions?
Oh, yeah, yeah. It's just, yeah, it's just, they're getting a lot of requests for wider, or three-car garage versus two cars.
Sure.
So the lots are going to widen. So we haven't platted this section yet. So it's perfect timing because the plat's going to still come in front of you guys, you know, have the changes in there as well.
So do you need a motion then?
No, no, just, yeah, just a blessing.
Okay.
One other thing, you had mentioned that let us know when our terms were going to be up and you're going to change them. Do you guys have that yet? Because I've got some. Because I've got some.
So that's one of those things that's in that waiting period right now for council to go through. So, yeah, so we will be working on that, but I think we're still, I think we're still thirty days out until we get that.
Do you have ideas of when the terms are, and I got some other, I've been asked to join two boards, and I just kind of want to know when this ends, so I can give them real information.
So I know we were going, the way, I think we were looking at structure was looking at, we want, how it needs to be is is a member each year, so we don't have numerous members at one time dropping off, and we're taking that six-year, two-to-three-year. So I, and I think how we're going to have it done is, which, whoever's the most current to come up first is going to be the first one that will be, that's kind of how we're doing it. And to be honest, I I think.
I think I was, I took over somebody.
You took over a one that's going to end, so I think.
If you just let me know when you get time, just on a rough estimate, so I can tell them I don't want to do more.
Sure. So it it will, the first term that, well, once we get this, will end at the end of this year.
Okay.
So that will be the first.
Just confirm it to me, if it is, then I can.
Yeah, but you'll have that option if to remain on the board or if you're taking on too much, then.
With that, I will move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. All those.